Good evening. The February 8th, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Mason Dunahoe from First United Methodist Church Youth Group. Mason is a junior at Christian Heritage. Please rise.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and just pray for the leaders that they would do what they need to do today and I pray for the members of the community that they would just do, they would just do what they need to do today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mason. We appreciate that very much. Tonight in employee recognition, I would like to read something to you. On Tuesday, January the 16th, a winter storm brought freezing temperatures and snow to Longview. The city closed our offices for the day, but there were still plenty of city employees that were very busy working in response to the city to the icy conditions. Public Works employees placed sand on roads and bridges across the city to provide more traction in trouble spots. They responded to multiple water line breaks, fixing the brakes as quickly as possible in the freezing temperatures. And one highly publicized incident, a semi truck collided with a traffic pole on Hawkins Parkway. What you may not know is that Public Works employees were able to have that traffic signal restored within two days. Public Safety Communications dispatched police officers and firefighters to respond to as many vehicle accidents, provided assistance to stranded motorists, as well as responding to water emergency calls due to frozen pipes at commercial businesses, all while managing their normal duties. Mod Cobb staff came to work in the snow to prepare the facility for events scheduled the next day. Animal Control responded to multiple calls for cold weather animal welfare concerns. Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center staff continued their seven-day-a-week responsibility to care for animals in their shelter. Many thanks to all our employees who helped respond to the storm. There simply isn't enough space in the room to accommodate all the employees that helped work the storm, but we do have several representatives from the various responding departments. Please come forward. Public Works, Traffic, Keith Covington; Beautification, Gary Johnson; Streets and Drainage, Kevin Lamanna; Carlos Rhimes; Fleet Services, Justice Jones and Jonathan Webb; Water Purification, Chris Everett, Patrick Burgess and Jim Moore; Water Distribution and Collection, Ted McAlister, Andy Stevens, John Ward; Plant Automation, Jim Kratz; Howard Kissick, Chris Snapp; Public Safety Communications, James Shrewsbury; Longview Police Department Officers, Nance, Sheridan, Cooks and Trainee Ferris; Fire Department, Steve Green, John Eric Johnson, Steve McCarthy, Travis Pickle; Mod Cobb, Fabian Rockmore; Animal Services, Nina Allen and Lindsay Farrell. I am so proud to stand here with these individuals that served our city in the time of need when, I don't know about y'all, but I didn't want to get out in that weather. It was freezing, the temperatures were horrible, and you all were out there in the elements doing your jobs as you do every single day. And that's what makes our city and our employees the absolute best there is anywhere. Every time you all do something for us, it's done unselfishly, it's done because you love what you're doing. And we really appreciate that because without you all doing what you did on those days when it was horribly cold, we would have had a lot more disasters than we had in our community, and we had very few and no fatalities that we're aware of. And so, you know, this speaks volumes for what our community does, what our employees do for this community. So, from the bottom of my heart, as the mayor of City of Longview, from the citizens I know that are out there, we all say thank you, thank you for a job well done. Let's get a, grab a picture. These are dedicated service truck communities, gentlemen. They deserve a round of applause. Next time you see one of these individuals out working on a day where we're all inside being nice and warm, stop and tell them thank you because they deserve every bit of that. We really appreciate our employees in this community. Community recognition. Tonight I want to recognize someone who's very special to me, not only as a friend, but as a tireless worker for our community. This person has served in so many capacities, it's hard to even write them all down. She's a legacy Longview Board member. She served at Newgate Mission Board, Neil McCoy's East Hanger Network Board, Arts View, Children's Theater Board, Journal League of Longview, President of Prep School PTA, 2018 Chair of Diamond and Diamonds, Benefiting Junior Achievement, sharing coordinates 850 guests for Stars Over Longview, the star maker that makes every star feel honored when they're here. Her gifts are multitasking and making everyone feel special and loved during everything she takes on. She's a mom of two children, but she gives tirelessly to this community. Libby Bryson, please come forward. I just want to tell you how much this person does and how well she does it. Everything she does, just with this smile, this attitude, anything you want shared or something done, this is the person you want to do it because this is what you get all day, every day. She's amazing. So, this is what we get in our community when we, when we talk about volunteers, this is a volunteer that we can all be proud of. So, Libby, thank you so very much. And you see, this is what, what happens when they never expect to be recognized. That's what makes volunteers like this so special. Her mom and dad are here, her husband is here. Thank you all for allowing her to work so tirelessly for our community. Thank you all so much. And Libby, Libby, if I'm not a star of Longview next year, something's wrong here. We're now to citizen comment. I have a couple of speaker cards. Greg Reynolds.
Thank you. My name is Greg Reynolds. The concern I'd like to raise, we live in Marbury Place, I'm sure you're familiar with that area. And what we'd like to propose is stop signs, four-way stop signs here on, at the intersection of Clover with each of the three streets, Sylvan, Melton and Knoll. The issue, one of the issues is that the neighborhood is bounded by two, two main roads, MLK on one side and Marbury on the other side. So oftentimes, the neighborhood just becomes a thoroughfare for people cutting, cutting through the neighborhood. That's one of the concerns. The real issue that I see though, is that, is the pedestrian traffic in the neighborhood. We have a lot of families that go from house to house visiting neighbors, and there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood. So, that's one of the concerns. We live right here on the corner of Clover and Sylvan, and, and so we see that, that pedestrian traffic. And for example, one of the things I often see is a family that travels from Knoll, up down Clover, down Knoll and Clover, and then down towards Marbury on Sylvan. So, you've got a mom on a bike, kids on bikes coming up to this intersection, you know, you're telling them to stop. Hopefully, they listen, okay? It's kind of a dangerous situation. We live on that corner. The stop sign on Clover at that intersection is at the top of a hill. So, when you're driving to the west on Sylvan, you can't see over that hill. If there's a kid down there or kids, someone crossing the street, you can't, you can't see that. So, it's a dangerous situation with pedestrians and cars and, and all of that. So, what we'd like to propose is four-way stops on each of those intersections in Marbury Place.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Sidney Allen.
Well, thank you for this opportunity, Sidney Allen, Quin Shadow Street, Longview. If I'm limping a little bit, it's because we just got back from a ski trip and I'm not near as flexible as I used to be. I'm here tonight to speak positively about the agenda item coming up on the Longview Arboretum. I feel very strongly about anything that's going to have a positive aspect on the city of Longview, and I think this is definitely something that would be good for us to consider and see how we can work on this. You know, we talk about, we talked to our relatives, our friends or whatever, and they said, "Well, come visit us." Well, what are we going to do when we get there? Well, I think this is an item that would certainly enhance the desire for people to come to Longview where there's people in the low, in the area, in the, in the local area, where there's people coming from Dallas. Anyway, if you've got relatives, friends or whatever wanting to come, I think this would be a great aspect to enhance, give them a place to go. Now, I think you've already all been talked about on the financial aspect of it, and I think you have in the financial program that will be presented tonight, explain it all to you. I think it's, it's just a wonderful example of the, from the city, from the county, from the state, working with corporate and private donors here in this area to provide the Longview Arboretum for the benefit of all of us here. It's just, like I said, I think it's an excellent example of that. I think the location on Cotton Street's very good. It's in the same area that the people are coming in for the wonderful athletic facilities we have at Lear Park. It's, it's right on that area, that location. I just think, and the board that's put, that's putting this project together, I think have done an excellent job, but I just would ask that if you have a positive reply on the Longview Arboretum, I think we would all appreciate it. Thank you. Maybe I forgot to say thank you for the parents here, for the city council board, for the new city manager, and for Mayor Andy Mack. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Always a pleasure having you in chambers, sir. Thank you. Thank you. I have no more speaker cards other than some zoning items. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. Thank you. We're now to public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you on a few things that we have going in the police department. Once again, we have our Free Women's Safety Seminar coming up, March 19th through the 23rd. Any women that are interested in women's safety, workplace violence, women handgun safety, this is, is a, is a great course and has become by far one of our most popular courses that we have in the police department. We have a registration deadline of March 16th, and for more information, anyone interested can call 903-808-3388 to get registered for that course. January 18th, I think the last time I come before you, I talked about our church safety seminar that we had planned. We, we held that January 18th at Grace Crossing Church up on Hawkins Parkway. We had over 200 attendees from numerous different churches, not only from Longview, but throughout East Texas. We had them as far as Tyler and Jacksonville. It was a real good day, a full day of education for the churches and how they can better secure their congregations should they have anything that arises in their, in their congregations or their, their church services. So, I want to thank everybody that attended that. We'll probably be planning to host another one in a few months because we've already had some requests for another safety seminar, so we'll be working on that. We had the opportunity this last quarter to recognize some of our employees for their tenure. I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Rebecca Martinez for 15 years, Lieutenant Kevin Freeman for 10 years, Officer John Rawls for 30 years of service, Sergeant Purdon for 10 years, and Officer Jimmy Redman for 15 years. We also had Officer Ron Duncan for five years, and Connie Bates, one of our records clerks for 15 years of service, so we got to recognize them. On the other hand, last month, we did lose two employees to retirement. We lost Sergeant Buddy Mopas, who was our sergeant over our traffic division. Buddy retired after 40 years of service. And a few days later, Assistant Chief Carlos Samples retired after 30 years of service, and want to once again thank them for their service to the department and to the city, and congratulate them and wish them the best on their next endeavor. I'd like to take just a minute and talk a little bit about our police outreach services team. Back on January 24th through the 26th, the two officers that we selected for those positions traveled with a group of individuals through Community Health Corps from Longview. They went down to Houston and looked at the mental health issues, and our officers got to spend some time with the homeless outreach team officers that worked for Houston PD. They were able to get some valuable information to bring back for us here to use. They, they took a look at some of the available services they had there, they toured some of the facilities, they went out and visited some of the homeless camps, reviewed some of their data collection, and took a look at how they were collaborating their efforts with other support entities, entities or nonprofit organizations that they could bring back here and hopefully implement within, within our program. And you can see some of the, the camps that they, they visited. We took this trip, we're in the process of planning to go to Lubbock to look at their program, which is, which is where we got our initial information from to set up our program. So, we'll be planning that trip, and soon as we do that, I'll bring back some more information from that. And then I'd just like to remind everybody about Crime Stoppers, where you can provide information on any criminal activity that's occurring within the city. And Crime Stoppers will offer cash rewards for anyone that provides information pertaining to a crime that leads to an arrest or an indictment. They can call 903-236-STOP to provide their information. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from Chief Bishop? We want to reiterate, Chief, Officer Mopas and Samples for their wonderful dedicated service to our community. They've been pillars in our police department, and we appreciate the, the service they've given to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on what's been happening in the fire department since we last met. We spent the last several weeks, really the last month and a half or so, getting new employees on board, filling some vacancies, and the first group that I want to recognize here are four of our newest employees that are more or less complimenting them on surviving our orientation process. We put these guys through a pretty rigorous orientation piece, lasted about four weeks where we kind of put them through the paces. They may come here with different experience from other places they've worked in the past, but we get them acclimated to our ways, our policies, so forth, our equipment, so that they can be more productive out there on the field in a quicker pace. So, just want to recognize Ryan Smith, Dustin Brundage, Jordan Lindell and Jason Frye. So, these guys are out there working for you right now, doing a great job. And also, two of our newest employees that we just hired, and with the addition, or with the hiring of these two employees, we're fully staffed, and so that's always a good thing. But we want to welcome aboard Nick Holland, who comes to us by way of the Marshall Fire Department. He started work on January 22nd. And Joshua, Joshua Minnick, who came to us by way of the Bryan Fire Department. He began his job on February the 1st. So, we're certainly glad to have both of these gentlemen on board helping us out. We have a very busy water rescue team, not just here in the city, but in the region. We had the opportunity back on January the 15th to assist the Texas Game Wardens with a recovery of a drowning victim over at Lake of the Pines. And you'll remember, this was the day before the ice and the snow kind of hit us. These guys do a great job, they're very well respected out there in the, in the response community. They, they break some pretty tough conditions and put all of that aside so that they can start that grieving or that closure process for the family that lost this loved one. So, we're certainly, we're, it's unfortunate the way this one turned out, but we're certainly glad we got to be a part of helping out and assisting that process to move it forward a little bit quicker so that that family can get into that grieving and, and kind of get that whole process started and, and move on from it. We had a couple of our special operations guys, Logan Leckins and Trey Thompson, they attended a bomb specialist school out in New Mexico. And again, this is one of those events that fortunately here in Longview, we don't respond to a lot, not that we haven't had an occasion through the years, but to have some people that are trained up and know how to handle not just that initial response, but the post-response of investigating, helping collect information, knowing what kinds of devices are out there certainly makes us a better, more well-rounded department. So, appreciate them taking some time out of their lives, travel to another state to get some specialized training. Had the opportunity earlier this week to speak to the Laterno Nursing Students, the senior class, about emergency management. Mark Moore, the county fire marshal, and I and some other staff went out, and I was very encouraged by these, these students' interest in emergency management. They're just getting ready to enter the nurse, the world of nursing and, and working in the medical field. And I was, I was extremely encouraged by their, their desire to seek opportunities to get involved in the emergency management side through volunteering efforts to help make our community better. They asked some great questions, and it was just a fun time. So, I appreciate Ms. Ballard letting us come into their classroom and spend a little bit of time with these students. Some changes are coming up to our training field. This is our fire training field down at Stamper Park. We are preparing to demolish some of our structures and move some of our vessels out of there. Hopefully, this will, this will make part of that community happy. We're, we're kind of thinning it down. So, we're starting that process. Some of our structures have been condemned, they're not structurally sound, so we're going to begin the process of cleaning some of that out of there. So, there'll be some activity going on down there, just in case District 2 and 3, you get any phone calls. This is all part of the plan, so we'll be removing three structures and 10 of the training props out of there. There'll still be some things remaining down there, we still have some things that we have to do, but these are things that we have determined that we either can't use or that we can do without. So, we're starting the process of thinning that down. Annual report data. We had an extremely busy year in, in 2017. Our call volume is reflecting about a four and a half percent increase. We're getting busier every day. Our average for last year was 51 responses today, and if you run the numbers just so far for this year to date, we're averaging about 70 calls a day. We're thinking that a lot of that, we're still crunching the numbers, but a lot of it is due to the flu, and so many people are having so much illness dealing with that. The hospitals are getting inundated with these patients, and it certainly has caused a spike in our, in our response volume. So, we're keeping an eye on that, but these numbers aren't going down. We're just continuing to get busier as the demand increases out there across the city. You hear me talk at the, for the last three months of every year about the EMS subscription program, I just thought I'd give you a quick little snippet. We saw a 7% increase from 2017 to the people that registered to participate in that program for 2017. So, 832, now keep in mind, these are households, it's not just 832 people, it's everybody that's associated with that household that qualifies. So, it's a number of people that are participating with that, and we hope that we continue to see that number increase, you know, as we continue this program. And just a quick reminder, I'll remind our citizens to sign up and participate with our code red notification system so that they get that phone call and know what's going on out there in times of severe weather or dangerous events, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Steelman? Chief, congratulations on having a full crew. Thank you very much for being diligent on that because we think that's very important to keeping our public safety where it needs to be. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now to consent agenda. Any items council like placed off for a separate discussion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now to zoning. Public hearing held to consider M-18-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council and Mr. Bonds. The planning department is requesting to reclassify the area on the future land use map along the west side of McCann Road, south of Spring Hill Road from office to retail. The future land use map is intended to serve as a guide in establishing appropriate mixes and intensities of land use throughout the city. It is not intended to be a zoning map. However, it does have a close relationship with the zoning map in that it is used in part to determine the appropriateness of rezone requests. In 2015, the comprehensive plan was adopted along with a new future land use map. At that time, that property, this property changed classifications from retail to office. Prior to the adoption of the comp plan and the new future land use map, a rezone request was granted in 2008 for a plan development without site plan approval for retail and multifamily. Staff is recommending that the future land use map be amended to provide more opportunity for retail development along this collector corridor. Adjacent residential neighborhoods will be protected through site plan review process and by implementing the landscape screening and buffering requirements currently within our zoning ordinance. Also, there is a large flood plan area along with a large pipeline processing facility to the west of this property. As seen on the future land use map, retail is located to the east of this property and is appropriate. Planning and zoning commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires the public hearing, which is now open. Any questions to Ms. Choi? Any speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Have public hearing held to consider application PD-18-03.
Thank you. So, this is the zoning request that goes along with this future land use map amendment. The applicant is requesting to rezone from plan development and multifamily to plan development for a self-storage mini warehouse. The development is located, again, on, at the southwest intersection of Spring Hill Road and McCann Road. In 2008, this property was rezoned from general retail and agriculture to plan development without site plan approval. This allowed for the property owner to better market this property and ensure quality development occurs in appropriate locations. Within the original plan development, self-minis, self-storage mini warehouse was actually slated to be on the spur, 63 on the east side, backing up to Misty Ridge Apartments and Princeton Apartments. In 2005, 2015, excuse me, the zoning ordinance, we did, staff amended the zoning ordinance to allow self-storage mini warehouse in general retail with specific use permit. The applicant, as seen on this site, site plan, is proposing to construct five self-storage mini warehouse with an office building that's approximately 72,000 square feet. Approximately 52,000 square feet of it will be air-conditioned and 20,000 will be un-air-conditioned space. No outs, outside storage of vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, or anything similar will be allowed at this location. The buildings will have a minimum front setback of 30 feet in the front, 10 on the rear and 10 on the sides. All the buildings will be metal buildings with metal roofs. However, the building will be partially clad with masonry, veneer, with synthetic plastic veneer panels, which is stucco-like. A portion of the exterior will have smooth-faced metal panels in the porch areas. These porches will be entryways into the building. They will have one monument sign not to exceed 50 square feet and will be constructed to match the look and feel of the building. A 15-foot landscape area has been proposed along McCann Road with a decorative iron fence with masonry columns. The applicant has stated that the landscaping along McCann Road will look and feel exactly like the bank across the street, and I can show you pictures of that. And so, the landscaping will match the landscaping on the bank across the street. To the rear of the property, the applicant has proposed to preserve as many trees as possible and provide an eight-foot solid wood fence along the rear and side property lines. provide an eight-foot solid wood fence along the rear and side property lines with a minimum 10-foot buffer area. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does require a public hearing which is now open. I have Jeff Hamilton here from Johnson and Pace for questions if needed. Any questions? Any speakers?
I'd like to thank Ms. Choi for working so hard on this. You know, sometimes storage buildings aren't always the nicest thing to look at, and she's worked hard with Johnson and Pace to come up with a nice facade for this. So, I think it'll look really nice up in that location.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now to a public hearing held to consider application Z-18-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 2.04 acres of Lot 1A and 1B, 4-square Unit 1 from plan development, 30 to general retail. This is located at the southwest corner of Forest Square and McCann Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a strip center on the vacant piece of property, which is the little strip on the back behind Little Mexico. This portion of McCann Road is a tech dot roadway, which is a minor arterial roadway and is appropriate for these type uses. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. I have a speaker card for Mr. King Guidry. King, you want to speak or just if there's questions? Thank you. Any questions or any comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application Z-18-02. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezon approximately 5.92 acres from plan development to, to general retail, or to multifamily. The PD was for retail uses, and now they're requesting to rezone to multifamily here at the corner of Gilmer Road and Fairmont Street. As you can see on this aerial, there are several apartments within this area, and we are located directly adjacent to multifamily zoning. Gilmer Road is a tech dot roadway, which is appropriate for this type of use as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. I have a speaker card. Ms. Janice Albert. Would you like to speak or are you just here for comments?
I just personally wanted to go on record against it. I'm a property owner in the area. Don't really know how it works, but do I need to go up there?
Yeah, you need to come up here if you're going to go against. It's okay.
And it's just, I'm just concerned that it is a very small area. They're planning on putting 84 units in there. It's a high-traffic area to begin with, and I think it compromises my personal property to have a multi-leveled property that's that adjacent. We share a property line, and I'm just opposed to that.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming up. Oh, is your address 801 Georgia Lane?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Oh, excuse me. Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address. We'll have you fill out a speaker card, okay?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Applequist. I'm with Generation Housing Development. I'll make this very quick. Our group, we're based out of Dallas. Give you my address. It's 9034 Meadownoe Drive, Dallas, Texas. Really, you know, we appreciate the council supporting affordable housing. We think there's a great need for it. With this specific site, our issues are, in the area, there's 100 acres of multifamily land already available. A lot of it's ready for sale, and it's already entitled and ready to go. Two, the tract is retail, which generates more revenue for the city than a multifamily tract would. You get sales tax. Makes a lot of sense to maintain your retail property. And then, three, there is an impact on us. Essentially, if this is rezoned and moves forward, we can't move forward on the tract that we have. We won't, there's just not enough funding. So, it impacts the owner, Mr. Carricker, he's here. He's lived here for a number of years. He's owned the site for 38 years. We won't be able to buy it, but that's about it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Action, zoning E. Public hearing held to consider application PD-18-02. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezon from single-family 4 to plan development to allow for the construction of a columbarium. A columbarium is arrangement of openings in a wall in which an urn containing ashes of the deceased are placed. The proposed structure will be built with a series of brick walls. The current plan calls for approximately 402 niches within the columbarium. The applicant has retained approximately .507 acres for future development of the columbarium site, as seen on the proposed site plan. The site will utilize existing parking at St. Mary's Church. There will be, they will utilize an existing rosary garden. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. Any speakers on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, public hearing held to consider application HL-17-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The Gregg County Historical Foundation is requesting a local historic landmark designation for the Gregg County Historical Museum, also known as the Everett Building. This will be Longview's fifth local landmark if this designation is approved. This building was built in 1910 and is the only example of 20th-century classic revival commercial architecture within our community. The Everett Building is a two-story building with a raised basement. The building faces the southwest corner of the alleyway, Bank Alleyway, and Fredonia Street. The majority of the exterior features to this building are original, including the primary entrance, along with the columns. Alterations to the building have been very minimal. Some notable tenants include Citizens National Bank, Rembert National Bank, the American Red Cross, and now the Gregg County Historical Museum. Between 1960 and 1979, the structure was virtually empty, and then Ann Lacy Crane purchased the Everett Building and donated it to Gregg County Historical Foundation in 1979. The Everett Building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is a recorded Texas Historic Landmark. Historic Preservation Commission, along with Planning and Zoning Commission, and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. Any speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi.
Thank you.
Now to action items, considering ordinance, amending Article 3 to Chapter 33 of the Longview City Code to expand participation in the city's home building program. Mr. McThee.
Mayor, City Council. The home building program was created in 2005. The main purpose of this is to provide affordable housing, more attractive, livable community, as well as additional revenue by developing blighted properties which require maintenance and expenditure funds with no revenue to the city. So, the changes in the ordinance are basically to amend that definition to reflect the purpose to provide affordable housing for low and moderate-income housing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. McThee?
Do most of these properties fall under the SLIP program?
Yes, sir. Most of them do.
Okay. And they're all over town, right?
Yes, sir. The, we are working currently to expand the program to other school districts and participating entities. We currently participate with three of the school districts, and we're working on the remaining two, remaining one. Sorry, Gregg County was the other one that we have that's participating.
Any other question, Mr. McThee?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McThee. Consider resolution, evidence to support for the application of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for 2018 competitive 9% housing tax credits. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Before we go to this specific item, what I'd like to do is just briefly go over the 9% tax credit program since we have five items on the agenda for you to consider. Let's see here. As stated, this is the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs 9% competitive housing tax credit. It's primary means of directing private capital towards development. The tax credits are awarded to eligible participants to help offset a portion of their federal tax liability in exchange for production or preservation of affordable rental housing. Most of the time, what they end up doing is they'll take that tax credit and sell it on the open market, and that allows them to have the equity capital that they need to go into their funding model. And as I understand the funding model on these, it's very, very tricky. So, but some key points to the program. Residents must meet screening, background, credit, and income requirements. It's not Section 8 housing. It's affordable housing. It's workforce housing. Rents are based on area median income, and they have different brackets within that that they set aside units for, whether it be 30%, 50%, 60% of the AMI. So, there's all levels of income brackets that they'll have, and then some of them will also offer market-rate rental units. So, the program's created over 2.4 million affordable homes since 1986, and as previously stated, the rents will be structured for families of all different incomes. So, those are the kind of the key points without boring you with all the other details. We did, we do have five applications that were submitted. Legacy Trails, they have asked to withdraw that, so there's no action required on that one. As I stated, this is a very competitive process, and as they go through the scoring and application process, they do a preliminary application and preliminary scoring. And so, through that process, you'll see that'll start to weed out some of the applications, and that's what's happened here. But, we do have the Longview Pines, the Longview Heritage Tower, the Hickory Trails, and Fairmont Estates. And then, here is a map that kind of shows, you can see the blue stars, the one downtown, which is the Heritage Tower or the old Weaver Building. We've got the one over on East Loop, near Page Road, and then we have a couple there in the Fairmont and Bill Owens area. So, kind of spread all over the, all over So, back to the item. As stated, the first item is for the Longview Pines Apartments is to consider the letter of support.
Can I ask a general question?
Sure, you may.
I noticed three of these are elderly participation. Would you explain the difference between applications that are primarily elderly versus family?
As best I can. So, under that program, they can apply under two scenarios, either for just open family, non-age-restricted, or they can apply under a senior-only age-restricted. And we have had that built. It's probably been eight or 10 years since we had one built. And every year, the point structure and the program changes, and I believe this year that program changed to make it more equitable and more fair for the senior-type facilities to be on a level playing field, and I think that's why we're seeing more of them.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Continue, Mr. Shirley.
So, this action item for Longview Pines Apartments is to consider a letter of support for the apartments located on the east side of Gilmer Road between East Fairmont and Stonewall. It is on multifamily, approximately 84 units, and it is a family facility. It's located in District 6, and as stated, it is being developed by the Brownstone Company. Here is a schematic plan that they have submitted that shows kind of the building layout. This will probably change a little bit as they go through the full site plan review, but this is very early on in the process. As you saw in the, in the previous zoning item, here's the location, zoning map, future land use, aerials, and then this shows where the regulatory flood plain and floodway is. There's just a little piece of it on the property. So, staff does recommend that you consider this and approve it because it does fit in with zoning and surrounding land use, and we have certainly had good luck with these types of facilities in the past. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Shirley? Ms. Williams.
Thank you for your presentation, Michael. Yes, we have had success with these projects. We have five, or is it four now?
Four now.
Four on the table. And I just would like for you to clarify a little bit because knowing what I know about the process, it can be a bit arduous. So, I don't think that we're going to qualify for all four projects, correct?
Correct. They generally only fund one new construction. Last year, we were fortunate, and we had a new construction and a rehab that was funded.
Right.
And so, there is that opportunity this year potentially where they could fund a new construction and the rehab.
And the Weaver Building, because that was one they were looking at last year as well, that one would fall under the rehab category, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And the way they do that, because they're also applying for federal historic tax credits and state historic tax credits, that helps offset that and make it a better sell.
Right. And thank you for clarifying the difference between Section 8 and affordable housing because there's, there's a lot of miscommunication about that in our community, and people don't really understand that they're completely different.
Yeah, and if you, if you look at what our income level is versus the 60 and 50%, that's entry-level workers, that's firefighters, teachers, city employees, people that work at the hospital, that, you know, so it's, it's people that we all, that we all know.
It's a very diverse mix, and I appreciate the matrix that you showed as well because from what I've seen in the past and working with these groups, just as you said, you may have someone who is a lower-income or moderately, moderate-income person in there, and they will pay one fee. And it also depends on the type, like if they decide they need a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. It's a sliding scale, and I think that we just really haven't educated the public well enough to know how this works. And then, you may have a physician assistant or even a resident, and they would be on a completely different scale, so their average, their monthly rent would be a lot, a lot more.
Yeah, and because of the, them selling the tax credits and getting the equity, they can build them as good or nicer than a true market-rate project. So,
Absolutely.
They're not, they don't cut corners.
Right. And the three, we have, we have two, well, one right now that's complete.
Yes, and we have one that's under construction,
One under construction.
A rehab that's under construction, and then previously, we've had, we've got some on Shelton and Wally that were...
And those are nice-looking facilities. I've visited them myself, so.
Yeah, and also with this program, they have to own the projects for a number of years. It's not like they build it and then flip it. A lot of these, that's all the companies do.
Right.
They're building their portfolios, and so, they have a stake in it for a long term.
Has the state set a minimum? Is it 10 years they have to own it or something like that?
I'm not sure what the minimum is currently.
Okay.
But I think it is.
Thank you. So, that's good. That's a good length of time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wright.
It's the Weaver, this is out of this one, but is the Weaver Building, is that elderly or is that family?
That one is elderly.
Any other questions, Mr. Shirley, on this issue? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go to number C, 9% on, which one do you want to do next, Michael?
I believe this one's Longview Heritage Tower.
Heritage Tower.
So, this is to consider a letter of support for Longview Heritage Plaza Apartments located at 208 North Green Street between East Tyler and Methan Street. It is in the central business district. It would be approximately 60 units, and this one would be a senior-type facility. So, it would be an age-restricted. As previously stated, they, they would be pursuing the federal and the state historic tax credits, and we would also encourage them to go for the local landmarks, so the perks that go along with that. So, it would help preserve the historic facade, but it would not restrict them on their internal. I do believe on this one, it is their plan to try to maintain some of the first-floor mixed use and then incorporate some of their facilities and amenities, but to try to keep it more of a mixed use and not just a multifamily. So, that'd be fitting with the downtown plan. This one does not have any flood plain. I'm pretty familiar with where that one's at, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Shirley? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll skip D because that's the Legacy Trails. We'll move on to Hickory Trails, correct?
Yes, sir. This is to consider a letter of support for Hickory Trails Apartments located on East Loop 281 between Page Road and Alpine. Loop 281 between Page Road and Alpine. This is outside the city limits in the ETJ. However, they would be requesting annexation if they were awarded the, the tax credit. It's going to be approximately 45 units, and this is a senior facility. There is a schematic site plan for your review. This one is in District 4 and is being developed by Four Corners Development.
Is there any question, Mr. Shirley?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go to Fairmont Estates.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider a letter of support for Fairmont Estates Apartments located on East Fairmont, west of Bill Owens. This one is zoned multifamily 3. It's approximately 81 units, and this would be a, a family-type facility. Here is a schematic site plan of the area where they'd be proposing some reserve areas. There are some regulatory floodways and floodplains that they'd have to work around and go through the permitting process on that. So, there's some opportunities for some open space reserves there. Here is the overall location, which is just down the street from the other one that we just approved. As you can see, you've got multifamily zoning in and around that area with some duplexes. Future land use map supports it. Here's the aerial. I think we all pretty much know that corner. It's been vacant for a long time. And this is the flood hazard map, so there's a lot of floodplain and floodway that they'll have to work around.
Any questions, Mr. Shirley?
Any questions?
Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Appreciate your presentations. Council of you will indulge me. It's been brought to my attention that we missed a speaker card. I would like to ask Mr. Chuck King to please come forward. He had wanted to speak, and I did not get the card, and we will make that happen. Sorry, Mr. King.
No worries, no worries. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I want to echo Sidney Allen's support of the Longview Arboretum. I requested a speaker's card tonight because I wanted to express how strongly I feel like the arboretum is going to be an extremely beneficial project for the future of Longview, and that will not only become a significant destination for our citizens, but also for those who live throughout East Texas. As a business owner, I know how competitive the market is for attracting new businesses and industry into a community such as ours, as well as recruiting new talent to work at and lead those businesses. I believe that the arboretum is one of those significant quality-of-life venues that businesses and families look at when making important expansion and relocation decisions. My wife and I have donated to the arboretum because we want to see a first-class venue that not only we can enjoy, but also that our kids and grandkids will enjoy for years to come. We also want to do our part to promote our city and to keep Longview on the map as one of the best places to live. It's why I've come here tonight, when I know that you're considering how to invest in this arboretum, and I am asking you to call for a vote for memorandum of understanding so that the construction and cultivation of the arboretum can begin in time with the natural growing seasons. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King, and I'm sorry that we missed that.
No worry.
Our mistake. Thank you very much, sir. Always a pleasure to have you in council. Okay, we are now to actually item G, Consider Resolution, authorize the memorandum of understanding between the City of Longview, the Longview Arboretum. Mr. Karen?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds. And as Mr. King just mentioned, we're speaking tonight about the arboretum and the memorandum of understanding that we've been working on with ETM over the past few months, as well as the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center Incorporated Board. And so, tonight, I'm going to allow for Mr. Marshall and Ms. Haslop to give you a, a short presentation, and then, I'll, I'll wrap it up with that and be, certainly be happy to answer any questions that you guys have as we move forward, and, and they will have, well. The one thing that I would certainly like to, to mention, this has been a, a very collaborative process between us and the board, and I appreciate all the, the work and effort that Mr. Bonds, Mr. McPhee have put forth on the city side, as well as every member of the arboretum board. And so, with no further ado, Teresa's going to speak to you a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Bonds, as you all, all are aware, the arboretum has the support of many members of the community and, sorry, and for good reason. As we've heard from a couple speakers already tonight, the arboretum will serve as a important amenity for the community, as well as provide a lot of recreational and educational opportunities for residents and visitors alike, anywhere from kids to adults of all ages. And it will serve as that new destination for attracting both new people to the community as well as new businesses as an amenity they might look for, for should we relocate here or should we relocate elsewhere. And we do want to add, as an important thing to note, is any of the city staff that would be hired to work for the arboretum, they would be able to be used throughout the city to support all of the other green spaces, such as the green, any of the public spaces that are being part, included as part of the revitalized downtown. So, it's not just going to be solely focused on staff for the arboretum. It is going to be for the benefit of the larger community as well. And so, we also wanted to provide you with a little bit of overview for what this agreement is actually going to entail. It is going to be an initial five-year term for the agreement with the option to renew for another five years, and it's going to encompass all of the city-owned property within the arboretum space. And so, what the city is responsible for is maintaining the property at the level of current parks, spaces around the city. And what the board is going to do is then provide additional funding to support the additional maintenance associated with those garden landscapes that the city typically doesn't have in other parks around the city. And so, the board is also going to be charging fees for entry programs at the arboretum, any event rentals, and then, all of this, these funds that they will receive are going to be used to support the arboretum. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the principal of my firm to talk to a couple more points.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to talk, talk to you about this. We, we've looked at the expenses which Keith, Scott will talk to you about, and then, the other thing we've looked at is, you know, what are some of the potential revenues for this particular site? And we've, we've done this on a number of other projects. We've gone into this with a very conservative approach, and we're not going to come here and say that we can make $82 million next year in revenue from the, from the site.
Sold!
I think 75 is legit, but 82, I feel.
We're good.
And so, we've looked at a number of, you know, we did a lot of research in other arboretum here in Texas. In the area, we've worked on a number of other projects, and so, we, we sort of have a pretty good sense of what these, what realistically we can do with this from a revenue standpoint. We've looked at memberships. We've looked at entrance fees. We looked at programming rentals. And we also understand that, you know, not everything is going to hit the ground running right from day one. So, for instance, the landscape will be relatively immature, and so, it may take some time before it reaches a level of maturity where that wedding photo or something like that really kind of kicks in and, and it becomes a, that, that revenue stream, you know, becomes something that's sort of significant. So, we've, we started out with a very conservative estimate of, on the low side, of about $70,000 annually in revenue, and over that first five-year term of the, of the agreement, that if everything goes really well, that we could perhaps get close to the 145. So, we're, you know, it's, it's important to, we need to figure out, you know, offsetting expenses with, with the revenue. So, we've, we've done that, and these are our projections right now for potential revenue for the, for the site.
Thank you, sir. So, now I get to talk about what City Council is really concerned about, I believe, which is the expense side of things. And so, I will mention that, that ETM has specifically looked at the, the plans and the drawings for the arboretum here in Longview. They didn't just take the approach that, okay, typically arboretums, the, the cost to maintain, maintain them is $10,000 per acre, and you guys have nine acres, and here you go. They specifically looked at the areas that, that our arboretum is going to have, how they're landscaped, how they're going to be able to be maintained, and then, they asked us to be able to work with what the local market is. And so, the, the numbers that have been developed for the anticipated expenses are directly related to our site specifically, but then, also taken into account the information that we have from, from our, our general location as to what some of those costs are. So, when we take a look at that, they also said, you know, let's make sure we're benchmarking this appropriately as to what other arboretums do. And, and there are a number of those within our area that they can take a look at to, to see if, you know, that falls in line, and it falls in about the mid-period, midpoint of what other arboretums of our size and similar amenities would be. So, we, we feel very good about the numbers that we have developed here as far as what we anticipate the expenses and the cost will be. So, to put it in terms of, of what the City Council and, and what would be included in the city budget, that's that number on that left. So, the overall exposure anticipated for the, the city would be about $270,000. We would anticipate that the revenue generated off the site, which you saw previously, as well as additional funding from the arboretum, they would provide that $88,000, which would reduce the city's net cost to $180,000. So, if you add the, the, the direct expenses, what the board would have, they would be putting in about $170,000, and the city would put in $180,000. So, 170, 180 is, you know, what that total cost would be, was $340,000, $350,000 for the total operations. Again, some of those expenses would be solely on the arboretum's part and doesn't, do not need to be within the, the city's purview as far as budgeting. If they have the funds to be able to, to spend money on plants, for example, then they would spend it, provide those to us. But if they don't want to spend money on plants, then they don't have to, and they don't give it to us. But we do know that there, there needs to be maintenance staff associated with it. So, the costs are primarily in personnel, and that's kind of what it comes down to. There are four personnel that will be assigned to manage our arboretum, or a horticulturist, as well as two maintenance people. As Ms. Haslop mentioned earlier, those positions would be available to assist in other city functions and areas as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and I know it's a, a very long document, but again, we, we've worked collaboratively, collaboratively to provide you guys what we feel is, is a good operational plan moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. I know council has discussions. Where would you like to start? Any discussion?
There's some questions.
Please, Mr. Moore.
We anticipate that the, the arboretum will be up and running probably the middle of next fiscal year, 18, 19.
Yeah, we would anticipate about 12, 12-month construction schedule. Certainly, we would hope that it may be a little bit shorter than that, but considering the weather and everything involved in it, so if we went out to bid later this spring, that would be looking at the spring of 2019. Late spring.
So, initially, in our 18, 19 budget, excuse me, would be half of the 270, so...
Correct.
Our initial budget would be 135.
Right. For the 18, 19 fiscal year, you're, you would be looking at what staff would present as a budget of approximately $135,000. Yes, sir.
In, in reviewing the, the MOU and comparing it to the first draft from, I don't know when, I, I noted that there's, there appears to be more flexibility in this draft with respect to allocating costs down the road, that each year during the budget cycle, the city would meet with the arboretum board and hash out how we're going to operate the thing the coming year. I like that. I, I think that's a, an excellent feature that gives us some flexibility of who's going to pay for what. The, the 167,000 that the arboretum board would be responsible for, does that take into account any costs they have maintaining their visitor, the building?
It does not. So, this is so, again, this is, that's, that's a very good point, is the MOU is solely for the city-owned property and park. It does not have anything to do with the building or the property owned currently by, by the arboretum and the board. What they have projected is that annual cost, at least for the next year, is about $100,000. So, they would need to generate about $270,000, of which we would anticipate, you know, about $70,000 from the site itself. So, you know, they would still need to come up with $200,000 in fundraising to be able to operate as they would anticipate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pearl?
As we talked about yes, that before yesterday, or yesterday, did you look into the easement that I suggested?
Right.
If we're going to have an entrance off of Cotton Street, is that going to be dedicated to the city permanently before the, anything starts?
I don't believe it needs to be a part of this MOU, but we certainly would need to have an operating agreement for, for access to their property into the arboretum. So, yes, sir, I, I believe that's something that we, we would need to let, take a look at.
I know, I know you all are going to all want to speak, and that's good. I would just like to just say one thing real quick. Everything's been presented to this point, but that's arboretum. I mean, if you live in the City of Longview, you have to say, wow, if that could happen, it would be fantastic. Every benefit is viable. We love the benefits of something of this nature because it adds quality of life to our community, and, and that's, that's, that's a benefit, no matter whether you like it or not. You know, I've said this a million times. I wasn't a book club kind of guy when I started the book club in Longview, and look where that took us and look where it went. I'm not necessarily an arboretum kind of guy, but I'm not saying that can't blossom as well. I think that's, those are individual choices, and I think when you, when you're looking at enhancing your city, you have to look not at just what you like, but what's good for the whole community. And I like the fact that we're, we're discussing this, because I think it's important that we discuss it, because I think if we could all snap our fingers, we would all say, build it tomorrow and make it happen and make it as big and as bad and as beautiful as you can make it, just like we discussed in Amphitheater. We, we all thought that was a great idea, and, and those are things that we want to see that enhance the quality of life of where we live. It is our responsibility as council members to be fiducially, fiduciarily responsible because we're the stewards of the city's money. And so, we have to look at these things. That's why we're having this discussion, and I appreciate everyone's opinion on this because we have to be able to account for the monies required to do anything that we do in this community, not just in arboretum, but everything that we do, the money has to be within our budget. And if we don't have that money, then we have to look and say, if we don't have it, where can we get it? Or can we get it? And if we can't get it, then we have to look within ourselves and say, what, how are we going to handle the situation? So, I just wanted to say that before we, because I know we're going to have some discussion, and we should have discussion. This is a, this is a, an opportunity that we have to look at very closely from a council standpoint, from the community that's, that's out there waiting for, hear what we're going to decide. So, somebody raise your hand.
Discussion, not so much a question.
How would a, a potential bond affect this?
I'm not answering that question because this isn't a bond.
If we do something on our, if we look at something like this in the future, and we've got three areas that we're looking at, public safety, public works, quality of life issues, how would this tie in with any of that?
Mr. Pearl, I, you know, I, I shudder at that, not because it's not a great question, because it is a good question, and it's something that, that we need to definitely consider because I know the, the bond word is out there, and I know we've discussed it amongst some of us and had, had discussion. We, we have the potential to have a bond election at some point in time to do some things that are very needed within the city. When that timing is, we haven't decided yet, and we, we're not to that point. But to say that this couldn't be brought up in the discussion, I think when you're talking about having a bond package for your community, everyone should have a say-so on what goes in the bond package. Not, not everything's going to be in the bond package, but it's not to say that the discussion can't be geared into that direction. And I have no issues with those types of things because we have to be open-minded when we're spending the taxpayers' money, and we do what, and then, the taxpayers get to vote on it, and, you know, winner, winner wins. You know, that's the way it is. And so, we're, we're so early in our bond talk at this point as to what could potentially be in it, but there is absolutely nothing to say that that is not in discussion, Steve, because I think it can be in the discussion, because I know there will be parks discussions in the bond package. There'll be public safety in the bond package. There'll be a Dallas Cowboy Football Stadium, the... in the bond package, there'll be a Dallas Cowboy football stadium in the bond package. Maybe not. Okay. I would like it there. I mean, come on. But there's lots of things we can discuss in that realm, and I think there is potential there. So even though I shudder at the bond because we're so, we're so, it's in such the infant stages of that bond issue, but thank you for bringing it up.
And also about the bond, I think it would have to be a new portion, if I'm correct, to bond something parks-related, it would have to be new construction. So it couldn't be anything that was already, you know, unworked, basically. So that's something to consider, too.
It is, it is. And Ms. Williams, that's a very good point that you bring up because just like I know we've talked about Lear Park, well, it would be new construction at Lear Park. It would not be enhancing what we already have at Lear Park or Broughton Park or any other park that we already have stuff there. It is new construction, and that's so, that is a discussion that we need to consider because I think that is, that's very valid.
Yes.
And primarily, what we're talking about tonight is operating costs, and that can't be financed with bond proceeds.
Correct.
Correct.
First, I want to thank the arboretum board. You all have done a fantastic job, and this is something that I think Longview could really be proud of. But the first time I heard about this was at a Rotary meeting, somebody made a presentation. I don't remember who the gentleman, I think it was a gentleman, I don't remember what his name was, but he made a presentation, and this was going to be privately financed. And I thought, boy, this is a great idea. If we can have this arboretum in Longview, this is going to be fantastic, and if it can be financed that way, great. But since I've been on the council, which I think the first budget I voted on was in 2015, 16, or no, 14, 15, the budget before that was $165, $170 million. In the three years we've, I've been on the board, on the council, it's been $165 million or less. And to make that budget balance and to not increase anybody's taxes, Mr. Willard used several hats to pull rabbits out of. He did a fantastic job getting that done. I spoke with Mr. Bonds, and he said, currently, if we had to do the budget today, which obviously we don't, but if we had to do it today, we'd be $2 million short. We've, in the three or four years that I've been here, we have given the police pay raises to get them up to the Tyler level so that we could keep our policemen here and hire the policeman that we needed. And that's been a fantastic thing. I think everybody can see what that's done for public safety. We've given the firemen a raise starting in April. They deserved a raise, and they're being brought up comparably with the Tyler area. So I think we've done all that, given all these pay raises and a 3% across-the-board pay raise for all city employees starting in April. All that is tied up money that four years ago could be used in different areas in the budget. It's not there anymore because it's tied up with that. Obviously, the $1 million that we're spending on animal shelter in the budgets previously, it wasn't needed. Now it's being spent there. So I don't really see, I mean, $180,000 is three more police officers if we need them. It's more firemen if we need them. It's more police cars, it's more fire trucks. When I came on the council, one of the things I ran on was being fiscally responsible and conservative with the taxpayers' money. I don't see right now how we could do this without increasing everybody's taxes a little bit. And unless we're increasing taxes for community safety or something like that, I don't feel good just saying, okay, let's raise taxes for this without going to the people of this city and saying, is this something that you want us to do? So that's where I stand right now.
Mrs. Shahar, please.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to voice my support. I think everybody probably knows I'm supportive of the arboretum. I've been involved since Bob took it over, and we had the folks from down in Austin help us do the master plan. I do feel like that we have been given direction from the citizens of the community to go out and do this type of premier asset for the city of Longview, based on the people that have supported by personally donating to the arboretum and the amount of money that they've raised, the comprehensive plan that speaks to you directly, getting more parks in Longview, making things prettier in Longview. I personally am in support, even totally aside from the arboretum, of having a director for the city that looks at green spaces, looks at how we can improve the new tech stop medians that we have, the green that we're going to have, how to make Longview a more beautiful place to live in than it already is. I think we should have people focusing on that. There are several things that we could do better in that area. And I think that people are telling us that they want to see that through donating to things like the arboretum, supporting the green, doing the comprehensive plan. So I am comfortable. I know it is a big deal for us to be considering looking at this type of money, and I know everybody wants to stick their head in the sand and say, you know, we don't have it, we don't know where it's coming from, but that's how all of those things happen. You know, if you would have said, the police need a raise, do you have an extra $1 million that I said, nope, we sure don't, but you know what, we figured it out because that's what the community told us to do and it was important to do. So I am in support of approving the memorandum of whatever it is, MOU tonight? Yes, that thing? Because I believe it's very important to our community, and I believe that there is sufficient support, for me as an elected official, to stand up here and say, this is not me saying I want an arboretum, this is what the community has said that they want.
Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. I think that I should definitely say something seeing how it is in my district, but I also am in support of the arboretum. Sometimes you just have to roll the dice. I so agree with what Mrs. Shahar just said. In order to enhance our city and to make the area more beautiful, if that is what the citizens are wanting, that's what we should do. So I do support.
Counsel, I know this may seem illogical, but it's not. At least in my own mind. I think we all are sitting up here saying the same things, but with a different approach because I think we all see the benefit of this. And I think we've raised some questions tonight that I think are very valid and very poignant in where we could potentially go with this. Because I have some questions still in my mind that are unanswered. I understand that the board and you all, I mean, if there's a fundraiser group out there, y'all are, y'all are the champions of that. Y'all can do this. I don't have any doubt you can raise money. But I'm still unclear as to how, we don't have anything set up as to how the percentages go. Like, if you raise money, and I'm just saying this hypothetically, say you raise X number of dollars, but your board decides we're going to use some of that money to, let's say, work on our building that we, that you own, and that's understandable, or the fees that you get from the entry fees and whatnot. We haven't really set up any parameters on percentages of how we might expect those to come to the city because I think there has to be some expectation there, and I don't, you're not going to give us 100% because you'd be stupid to do that. You have to keep some for your things that the board has to do, and I get all that. But I would like to know how that's going to be set up in percentages and how we're going to fund this. Because when we get creative, we can do a lot of things. We've seen that with Mr. Willard sitting right here, and I know Mr. Bonds is just as creative. And I know, I've talked to Mr. Bonds, and he's flat-out told me we do not have the money in this for our budget, and he's told me that. And I respect that because that's just what he's paid to do, is to come up with a balanced budget and make sure we don't get upside down without going into our reserve funds, which we said we're not going to do, we don't have to. But the talk about the bond package, what I'm saying, bottom line is this, I would like to entertain a motion to table this tonight because I would like to explore some things that I think could make this a better opportunity for everything involved. Because I think we can make this better where we all grasp our hands around it, and then we come up with something that is very desirable from everyone's standpoint. So that's my motion. I'm going to make a motion to table this till our next meeting only, and then we will have time to research some things that I need to be clear in my mind about, about things of that nature, and then we can hopefully proceed right on forward. So there's my motion.
The motion is to table just till the next meeting, though?
To the next meeting, only to the next meeting. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. The motion passes. We will table this till our very next meeting. It will be on our agenda. We will vote on this MOU on our next meeting. Okay? And thanks to everybody here who had a part in this because this has got the potential to really be a great thing for our community. So I appreciate everybody's involvement. Thank you very much. We will now consider a resolution authorizing and acting city manager to execute documents to accept donations up to $250,000 for the city of Longview. Mr. Bishop, chief bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds. Item H before you tonight is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to accept a donation of up to $250,000 from multiple donors from the first annual Go-Giver Gala. These funds will be utilized for special programs to help the homeless that will be aimed at alleviating homelessness. Tonight, we ask for your approval of this resolution.
Is there any questions of chief bishop on this? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll consider an ordinance amending the budget for the said donations. Chief Bishop.
Item I before you tonight is the consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 to 2018 donated revenue budget and the amount of up to $250,000 for specialized programs identified by the mayor's task force on homelessness, aimed at alleviating, helping in alleviation of homelessness in the city of Longview. Tonight, we ask for your approval of this ordinance.
Any question of chief bishop? Is there a motion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Chief Bishop, I was wondering, do you have any thoughts yet on how you're going to use the money?
No, sir, we haven't identified any needs just yet.
Mr. Wright, great question, and I appreciate you asking that question because that will be the perusal of the council. This council will discuss the allocation of those dollars, and we will come up with how we'll decide to allocate them to proceed forward. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now items of community interest. Mr. Moore.
I want to thank everybody that came to my town hall meeting Monday evening, kicking off the discussion of prioritizing the projects that go into implementing our comprehensive plan. And mayor, I agree with you 100%. We're in the very preliminary stages of that prioritization process, but I think it is very, very important that the citizenry get involved in this discussion as early as possible because this, as the mayor said, is your money, and you all need to be setting the priorities on what we spend it on. So anyway, thanks again for coming, and I hope that was just kind of a catalyst to get the discussion going.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Snotty.
Well, tonight is very surreal for me. I'm going to miss Councilwoman Williams, my friend, my mentor, my sister. Can't say enough about you. I know that you will continue to do great work. I just want to thank you for the service that you've already done, and you're just moving to a different venue because I know you're going to keep doing what you're doing. So, you know, I love you and thank you so much.
I'm going to skip you, Ms. Williams. I'm going to come back to you in a minute, okay? Ms. Shahar.
I have a town hall meeting coming up. It's going to be a joint town hall meeting with Longview ISD board member Chris Mack and myself coming up next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at Winterfield United Methodist. We would love for you to join us. In fact, it also happens to be Fat Tuesday or Shrove Tuesday, so if you show up a little early, my church would be glad to feed you a free pancake dinner, so come on over and join us. And I guess you will just sleep through my meeting, but whatever. Tasha, I love you. We're going to miss you. But Nona's right, you're going on to do good things. More proud of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright.
Just a couple of things. I want to thank the first responders for the great work they did during the ice storm and getting out there in the cold, and the public works people working in the ditches, fixing water leaks and freezing to death out there. So a big thanks to all of them. And Ms. Williams, it's been great working with you, and it's been a great experience and good luck in all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearl.
Well, we've had our moments, haven't we?
We have.
But I want to thank you for being here and serving with you, and I hope you achieve what you want to in the future.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Well, we had a party at 4:30 today. It has been a sincere privilege and honor to have served. I said I was not going to be emotional, but it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as citizens. Staff, thank you. Each and every one of you, especially those who sometimes, when I stormed into your building, especially those when I would call you, robo-call you on your cell phone because I needed something fixed or we needed to handle an issue. Thank you, mayor, Dr. Andy Mack, and to your predecessor, J. Dean. Thank you to Mr. David Willard and to Mr. Bonds, who I've known for many years. A lot of times, people think it's really easy, but in order to serve, you know, Jesus came to serve and not to be served, and that has been the mantra that I've carried forth ever since I came back to Longview and decided I wanted to be a part of something much greater than myself. And I am so grateful for all of the things that we have accomplished, not only in District 3, but in the city of Longview. I am grateful to all the people that I've met and that I've worked with, to my family for dealing with me, and even my dog, who I get on his nerves, too. But it's been a great ride, and I feel so blessed to have gotten to know each and every one of you. Comrades on the council, I'm not going far, Steve. Thank you for your kind words, and to everyone that came out today for the reception, I really, really appreciate it. Longview is a great community, and there are so many more things to be done, and it takes all of us truly working together with the spirit of God and a heart for the people to make things happen. And yes, you know, Councilwoman Snotty said something that I live by, another one, sometimes you got to roll the dice. And so I ask everyone to continue to pray for our community, and let's just move ahead. And thank you for allowing me to have served these last seven years. Thank you. Thank you all.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Bonds.
Well, I have a few things. City of Longview's Partners in Prevention is proud to host the 14th Annual Unity Honors Luncheon at Moncah, February 21st at 11:30. The deadline to order tickets and tables for the event is Friday, February the 9th. Tickets are $15 per person at longviewtexas.gov/unityhonors. And that's always a wonderful event. Please try to come out and join that. Longview Public Library is planning a winter writer's workshop, February 24th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Come learn the tools you need to become a successful writer. Longview Parks and Rec invites families with kids 12 and under to the Kids Fishing Day at Teague Park, February 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That is such a fun thing to go and watch, those kids catching those fish. It is an absolute blast. Take time to go out there and just visit and enjoy Teague Park. It's such a place to go out and enjoy our beautiful city. Upcoming events, there are several events in the Longview community. Big Tech is a chance to peek behind the scenes at the amazing technology that makes Longview work. Take free industry tours on February 24th at several Longview manufacturers. Longview Running Club, partnering with Hart's Way Hospice of Northeast Texas, will host the Kilgarey Longview Run, February 10th at 8:00 AM. That's like 11 miles. Really? I don't drive 11 miles in my car in a week, but it's a great run. It really is a lot of fun. So go out and do that. East Texas Builders Design Show will fill Moncah, February 10th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. East Texas Symphonic Band's Winter Celebration will be at the Beltrier Center, February 12th, at 7:30 PM. For information on any of these events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. Well, survey question. I know it wasn't a real exciting question, but I really asked this question because I needed information. I needed to know really where we were. Do you believe we have enough affordable housing options in Longview? And I asked this because we had obviously five on our agenda tonight. Our answer, yes, 52%, no, 48%. So I mean, we're right there. No one really knows. And I didn't know either, and I thank Sean and Chetiva Marshall for giving me some information. And really, to be honest, here's some statistics. We have 15 low-income housing properties in Longview. We have 560 income-based affordable apartment units. Additionally, there are 424 project-based subsidized units. And if you compare us to the surrounding areas, we're a little bit lower, we're in the ballpark, but we, I guess... the ballpark, but we, I guess that's why these individuals are applying for these opportunities, because I think they see the need, and when the need is there, my goodness, why can't we try to provide that need? So, I appreciate city staff and Roland and Michael for going through the process to try to bring us up to where we need to be. So, hopefully, this will turn out to be something that's a real beneficiary for our community. Okay, now, this one didn't really turn out the way it was supposed to turn out, because it says, are you as excited as I am about the Winter Olympics starting today? The answers are supposed to be yes and yes. There was no no in there, because who's not excited about the Olympics? I mean, my gosh, it's the greatest athletes in the world, summer, winter, I don't care, it comes around every four years, I love them. Well, 43, 44% said yes, 38% said no, and the rest said they didn't know the Olympics were this week. Really? Oh, my gosh, I can't wait. I love the Olympics. Okay, well, that just about wraps it up, except, Cash, it's my turn. I just want to tell you, it's been a pleasure these last two and a half years working with you. I've seen you grow on this council since you started in 2011. You've always had a heart for your district, a heart for this community, and I think it speaks volumes when someone can see both. You can see what's required for your district, and you see what's required for the community, and you always seem to be able to manage that. And your presence here has always been lively, and I appreciate that as well. And I know that wherever you go, whatever you do, you'll do well, because I've said it, said it today, as a matter of fact, you're like a cat dropped out of a window, you always land on your feet, Kasia, no matter what. And I was asked, what would I miss most about Kasia? I'll miss her hair. Who won't? I'll miss her fashion, she's always fashionable, but most of all, I'll miss her cell phone going off during council meetings, because she does not know how to hit the silent button. But Kasia, it's been a privilege, it's been an honor. This city owes you a debt, and you've paid your debt to us. We thank you very much. So, please come forward, I have a little presentation for you.
This is for you, and this is for Kasia Lynch, Councilwoman, District Three, from 2011 to 2018. You have served us well, and we appreciate you more than you know.
Thank you.